July seventh, meeting at Marion Town Council. Will the meeting now-
Come to order. We'd like to begin with the invocation given by Chief Kevin Testerman. Please stand if you're able.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your grace and mercy upon the blood victims in Texas and all the other national tragedies going on at this time. We know you're the greatest healer, provider that you can provide for our country and our nation. As we look over our soldiers and our birth responders. We also ask that you lead us in the right way and make the right directions for our community. In your name we pray and command it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome all our visitors here today and everyone watching from home. We will start with the roll call. I see the two members are not with us yet. But we have a forum, so we will proceed. We need a motion for the approval of the minutes.
So they-
You want them separately?
Um, Cindy, do we need them separately?
Yes, June sixteenth. Second.
Make a motion, we approve the June sixteenth meeting minutes.
Motion's in second. All in approval.
And I'll make a motion, we approve the June thirtieth minutes as written.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. We'll need to add one thing to the official agenda, and that's going to be the swearing in of our new Chief of Police, Kevin Testerman, which we are going to do at this time.
Do you want a motion to fill the agenda stated?
Uh, yes, thank you.
I make that motion first?
Second.
With that one correction?
Motioned with the correction.
Second with the correction.
And seconded, all in favor? I'm such a hurry to get you sworn in as Chief of Police, sir Kevin, that although you're already officially our Chief of Police, if your family would like to stand with you, that would be wonderful. And we will begin. If you will repeat after me and raise your right hand. I, Kevin J. Testerman-
I, Kevin J. Testerman-
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia-
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia-
And I will faithfully and impartially-
And I will faithfully and impartially-
Discharge all the duties incumbent upon me-
Discharge all the duties incumbent upon me-
As Chief of Police of the town of Marion, Virginia-
As Chief of Police of the town of Marion, Virginia-
According to the best of my ability-
According to the best of my ability-
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, Chief. I'd like to hand you the picture. And we're gonna be handing you this somewhat unofficial document here that you need to sign in just a couple of minutes. I just need to get your signature on this document, sir. You're already officially the Chief of Police, but I think that considering the circumstances, swearing in, that way you're here to say- Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
But you're official, you're official there.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir. That's with all my scrutiny. We have no public hearings scheduled, so we'll move ahead with public presentations. And we have Bev Haddock with Smith Animal Rescue and the Humane Society. Bev, if you'll approach the podium. Of course, yes, whatever you're coming for.
Can you flip it around so the public can see it too? Maybe angle it this way, just a little, and we can see it, and some of them can. Yeah. Yeah.
I want to thank you for having me back here. I'm here to thank you for the pet support of both the animal rescue and the Humane Society and to ask again this coming year for additional donations. And I wanted to give a real, very brief presentation that if clear of any questions that a lot of people have, particularly the public, we get questions all the time of who we are and what we do, and it's very confusing, and that's why they need to hit this poster. Because they all sound alike, all the entities sound alike, and we have a lot of cross-activity. So real briefly, there are three entities that deal with the animal population, the pet population in the county. The first is the animal shelter, which is funded by the county. And it has consisted of animal control officers who go out and find the lost dogs and abandoned animals and hoarding situations, and remove the animals and take them back to the shelter where they're cared for. And basically, three things that happened in the past. They either been reclaimed or adopted, which the percentage was very small, and then end up euthanized, and the percentage unfortunately is very high for many, many, many decades, not just years, but decades. About forty years ago, the Humane Society came into existence in this county, and it's an all-volunteer organization. Nobody gets paid to work in it, and there are a lot of volunteers. And our whole mission has been to spay and neuter the animals within the county. And we provide low-cost spay and nuters for the convenience and the pocketbooks of our community members. We actually run the transports to the Margaret Mitchell Clinic. Now it's called the Humane Society. We do those twice a month, and those numbers have increased. The number of animals we've been able to serve tremendously. So a few years ago, we were able to branch out and start doing something very popular across the country, and that's trap neuter release. And that is trapping cats that are a problem within the community, mainly at restaurants and that kind of thing where they collect, they're the dumpsters. We trap, neuter, or spay them through the Margaret Mitchell and other clinics in the area, and release them back in the community with somebody who feeds them on a regular basis. And that way they can not reproduce, they have their shots, vaccinations, and they stay healthier. We also, through the Humane Society, gather food from local grocery stores. Food City has been really helpful to us in this effort, and other grocery stores have helped also. And we collect food and then distribute it to various food pantries across the county so that folks who otherwise might have to give up their animals or might just turn loose because they no longer afford to pay for them, for their food, it gets to the people who need it. And then we also have a fourth arm, and we provide emergency services to when there is an emergency for an animal that needs care and the people who own it cannot get their foot in the door of the vets. So we have about seventy thousand dollars set aside for that every year, and it's usually used fully. So like I said, we are all volunteer, and so we're 501(c)(3), and we therefore function on donations, grants, memorials if somebody dies and wants to make a donation, and somebody's honor. Those are very helpful to us too. So that's where we get our budget. And last year, well, twenty twenty-three, the Humane Society did thirteen hundred and forty-six spayneuters with a total cost of eighty-eight thousand five hundred and twelve dollars. This past year, twenty twenty-four, we did eleven hundred and forty-six spayneuters at a cost of seventy-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. So we do a lot in spayneuters.
Wow.
And it does cost a lot. We do ask for cokes from folks as much as they can afford, but it ranges from nothing up to about half of what the cost is for spayneuters, vaccinations, and all of that care.
Bev, what is the cost per animal?
Um, I can give an approximation because it depends on if it's male, female, cat, or dog, the size. For smaller, for cats, I think it's somewhere around forty-ish. For dogs, I think it's around sixty-ish, somewhere in that range. But I'm not one who handles all of that, so I can't tell you exactly. But that's the general decision. And that's through Margaret Mitchell or through the we have a vet that we work with in Christiansburg that puts sales on spayneuter sometimes. And therefore Rebecca Curran, who does the trap neuter release, uses them a lot when they have their sales on, because we can get, say, a cat in for spayneuter for like twenty bucks on those occasions.
That's good.
Any other questions? So that's what the Humane Society does, busy organization for all volunteers. In two thousand nineteen, Dave and Suzie Fields started another 501(c)(3), and it's the Smith Animal Rescue and Resource Center. How many of y'all have been there? So if you've been there, it's a forty-seven on the hill. We call it the barn. And we, at the shelter, the whole mission of the shelter was to take animals from the community and mainly pull them from the shelter and take them to the rescue so that they could be spayneutered, get their vaccination, be healed if they had other medical problems, and then get them adopted or get them moved to families and rehome, either here or at other locations. We have two bands, so we do a lot of transports mainly to the northern Virginia region, but sometimes we go further north. And we do a wonderful job of getting this done. So the numbers of animals that were coming into the shelter have been probably pretty staggering for a lot of people. We, in twenty twenty-three, for the shelter, there were one thousand four hundred and four animals come through. And in twenty twenty-four, it was one thousand three hundred and nine. And we were able to, through the animal rescue, actually let me get this right here. We put through nine hundred and ninety animals in twenty twenty-three, and in twenty twenty-four, it was eight hundred and twenty-six. So we put through high numbers of animals, and they do a phenomenal job. We now have up to four employees at the animal rescue and including Vet Tech, which is never gone since to us. And we are also funded by grants, donations, and fundraising. Now, the way all these interact is, I told you that we SAR pulls animals from the shelter so that they're not euthanized, because the numbers have been in the past for euthanizations just horrendous. I mean, when I started working with, probably in the early two thousands, the rates were like seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three percent. Of all the animals that went through the county shelter were euthanized. Just really sad. When Margaret Mitchell opened and we, the Humane Society, started the program to take the animals to Margaret Mitchell, the rates came down pretty dramatically. That was like around two thousand fourteen, fifteen, and the rates started dropping to forty, forty-two percent. In two thousand nineteen, it was thirty percent that the euthanasia rate had dropped to. With SAR starting in two thousand nineteen, we are now down to ten percent this past year of all the animals that had come into the shelter being euthanized because we pulled them, got them to where they could be adopted, and adopted and now are shipped out.
What makes you make, not you, but what makes the decision to be made to euthanize an animal?
Well, they were basically, they had a different criteria when the county was making all these decisions. They did very few adoptions. They did not open the shelter for adoption. People could come in and adopt, except a very small number. It was very hard for people who worked to get in. One of the things that's made a difference just since past year is that in last year, the county, Mr. Butt approached SAR and asked them if they would contract with the county to take over the running of the shelter. And that means hiring the employees for the shelter, not the animal control. They stayed with the county. But hiring the shelter and supervising them, the shelter staff, and making the decisions about how long this was gonna run. And our priorities are very different than what the counties were, so we changed the rules. And so our priority is getting animals spayneutered, medically ready, and adopted or shipped out heading to the SAR to allow them to be rehomed. So it's a matter of priorities more than anything else. The trap neuter release statistics, in twenty twenty-three, we trapped about two hundred and fifty animals. In twenty twenty-four, it was four hundred and eighteen. And from September of last year until June of this year, Rebecca gave you these statistics, in Marion, we had trapped a hundred and sixty-two cats, Sawal twenty-five, Toulahawee thirty-two.
Now, are those the feral cats?
Those are feral or community cats. She has found in her work that a lot of the cats that we thought were ferals that she was catching turned out to be cats that had been turned loose and were fairly domesticated. So if that's the case, then we take them and put them in this population and rehome them. So we were very honored that the county thought we were doing such a good job with our animal rescue that they asked us to take over the management of the shelter. So we do have a contract we took over September first of last year, and it's going very well. On the reports that I have received. So does anybody have any questions about any of this, interactions? The Humane Society and SAR are two different 501(c)(3)'s, but we have the same board and our sister agency. We work very closely together. We have money separate, donations and fundraisers separate, but our sister agency, so we're very close. But I tell you, we do a bang-up job. It's amazing. The amount of volunteers we have and how dedicated they are, it's amazing. We probably have forty, at least forty volunteers at our rescue who actually come every day to feed the animals, walk the dogs, clean the cages, play with them. They are amazing today.
How much did we give you last year?
Twenty-five hundred dollars, I think, if I'm not mistaken. That's what we ask for each one of the municipal municipalities. And we appreciate it so much.
We appreciate you coming to tell us how you spend taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you. Good presentation, thank you.
Good to see you all. Thanks again for all of your support. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your presentation. And in that vein, I do see that there is a five hundred dollar reward for the safe return of a Beagle Hound mix Otis that has been lost in the Cedar Springs Road area. If anyone has any information regarding this pet, it needs to be found immediately. It is chipped and is a rather agreeable-looking pup. So if anyone, especially at home, has any information, we have the information here in Town Hall. We'd be glad to share that with you.
May I add something to that?
Yes.
This dog belongs to one of our employees, Mandy Scott.
Oh, okay.
So we didn't find it.
I hope that we, I hope that we find Otis. Any action from council? None, then we will proceed with our public comment time. No, we don't have citizens' time listed on our agenda here, I believe, but we do have a couple of public comments. Is it-
Public comment time.
Oh, it is under public comment time, okay. I was, I was looking in the wrong place. Okay, so first up, we have Danny Parks. Danny, please approach the podium.
Yeah, I'm Danny Parks from Six Thirty-three Hindy Street. And reading them up here, the y'all come, the town come up here and move stuff up my house, hogged it off, and I had it all cleaned up, and they went back in the back and helped themselves, and they hogged my doggone railroads off. And I gotta ask you how much it cost to put them out? The old railroads had to have all four pieces come down to, or a new railroads. So I got me an assman and a gift to Bill Rush, and they put the seatbelt panel before it, because they hogged it off. And that's just like me coming from the storehouse stealing stuff. That's what they done, they took and hogged it off. And I got it on tape and everything, and I was gonna get y'all a copy of it and let y'all watch it on tape and see what went on that day, because they taped it out. But they posted, got me some copies, I don't know if they did or not.
Billy, that, I know the check you're talking about. Isn't that put up for safekeeping until some-
Mark, was that not heard in the court?
It was actually, it's been a while back that he came to the town council, and he filed two court rules against him, and that would have been the focus of-
Yeah, so-
Court, so-
It went to the court, man.
Did you not know that, Danny?
Huh?
Did you not know it went to the court?
Yeah, I went to court, went to court, and they would say that my lawyer didn't bring it up about my railroad stuff, I mean, but Bill Rush is, well, I was out here tall, haggy, and Mary was out there on the street one day. was out there on the street one day, and Bill Rush said he's going to pay me for it. So, I mean, I think town owed me for it because they hogged it out. I mean, they didn't come up nothing about my, they didn't come up nothing about my rail stuff when we went to court.
He does, Mr. Parks does have an outstanding invoice with us for cleaning all that up.
And how much is that invoice?
Sorry?
How much is the invoice?
It's around $2,000.
So, what you're saying is that the amount of the railing is offsetting part of the cost of the cleanup of Mr. Parks's property?
No, no, no.
No, no, the court ruled against him, Abraham.
There was some trap metal that was sold, and that offset as that.
Okay.
So, Danny, do you understand that?
Huh?
Do you understand what our attorney just said?
This matter has already been heard in court, and it no longer has any standing with the town of Marion. I'm sorry to inform you, but you, you need to, you need to move on from this. This isn't something that the town of Marion can help you with any longer.
I mean, I don't understand why they told you about that, but they didn't say, I mean, there wasn't nothing about, in court, said about my rail stuff, they called it off. And Bill Rush is right there, and you know it, and Charles Haggie know that, he said he was going to pay me for it.
Well, Bill Rush is no longer with the town of Marion, and I don't know of any contract that was made that would pay for your railings. I believe this matter needs to close.
Yeah.
We will move along. We have J.S. Staley. J.S., if you please approach the podium.
My name is J.S. Staley. I'm a resident of Marion, longtime resident. I've been here before. I'm just trying to find out what's going on with the vagrant community, what actions have been taken, what the plan going forward might be. The reason I'm here tonight is because the clock's ticking. I don't want you all or myself to get involved in this situation as the weather gets worse and worse, because I know the excuse that's going to be made then is that we can't do anything with this inclement weather and how bad it is. I'm simply here to see what's going on, what we can expect, and where we're headed on that. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, J.S. I can assure you that the efforts are being made to alleviate that situation. I'm not sure the extent that we can share these matters with you at this point in time, but please be assured, we, we do have the town of Marion in your interests at heart. Next, we will move on to council members' committee reports, and we'll start with Vice Mayor Gates.
No report, other than the fact that after a few false starts, I finally, I was sitting trying to watch the fireworks, and I thought, okay, there were some early things that looked like fireworks, and I couldn't tell, I wasn't right at the stadium, I was a distance away. And finally, it happened after a while. I think the ballgame went longer than expected. But anyways, with the county's help and, you know, on the county's property, I think they did a very nice job with them. I don't know if any incidents there were with them. Was there anything...
I haven't heard anything today.
But it was...
If they had any issues...
It was nice having them up there.
If we had, with some of the tracks sold, but yeah, they are very difficult to manage within the town of Marion.
Well, I think they did a good job. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Gates. Councilmember Spencer?
No report, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings?
Just enjoyed the June 10th weekend, and I've heard a lot of good comments about those activities that weekend, as the fireworks, was it last, it was last night?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hard to miss those.
Yeah, right. They were, they were great, and you're right, they didn't get started until late, I guess because of the ballgame, and it was almost between nine-thirty and ten when they got started. That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Abell?
I don't really have anything to report on, but just in some conversations that I've been having with the public and just some of my personal thoughts myself, I was curious of when we thought that the discussion might hit the floor of when we could start thinking about doing a boundary adjustment for our exit 47 lands, because just in some conversations that we've had, I hear that it's a pretty lengthy process to get that done, and just looking at future economic and town growth, if we might want to go ahead and start looking into that and seeing where we land.
I have talked to Sean about that a couple of different times. I'm not sure Dr. Gates is ready yet to use it.
Not yet.
Okay. Yeah, I think that, I think they are eager to look into that. So, we probably should do, check something out.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Carter?
Deb and I and some friends attended a baseball game last night, and it went on longer because the score was eight to five, and you got all the pitcher changes. You really can't set a time limit how a sporting event, how long it's going to last, so, but a huge crowd. One lady working the gate thought there was close to a thousand folks there, and so...
Fourteen hundred, Mr. Park.
Huh?
Over fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred. Outstanding, yeah. And it's good to see baseball back in the town of Marion. Been a long, long time, and the fireworks, I heard just all sorts of positive comments. Several people said best we ever had. So, kudos to whoever the professionals that did it.
I'm not sure...
I don't know, but they were synchronized, very, very well done, so hats off to...
That's all the county's doing.
Hats off to them. That's it.
Thank you very much for your report. The mayor's report will continue, and this will include my six-month evaluation of departments. But first of all, I do want to say thanks to Public Works and Fire and Rescue and everyone else that attended the fireworks last night. It was, it was amazing, and I believe that the quality of the fireworks was what made the entire show. Something about, it was pretty much twice the millimeter of shells that they were using and the system that they were using. So, anyone that was there, and if not, I've got it recorded on video, it was, it was absolutely fantastic. Also, the River Bend Car Show and the Crab Fest went very, very well, and it was well attended, and I want to say thank you to everyone that helped to put that on. That was, that was a good event and a good day and good weather for that. And I also want to say thanks to everyone that participated in that, because it took a lot of people to bring those beautiful, fine vehicles in there and show them to the public. So, we, we will continue. This might be a little bit lengthy, but this is my bi-annual report on the conduct of departments. And under 2-81 in the Marion Code Division, Mayor, there is a section that says the mayor shall acquaint himself with the conduct of each of the city departments in addition to those under his immediate supervision, and from time to time, shall report to council thereon with such recommendations as he seems desirable. And so, we will begin. During my first six months as mayor, I considered myself in an observational period, and I observed most of the departments, the activities of administrators, staff, and employees, according to town code and my position, familiarized myself with the departments, and looked into the areas that needed attention. I am going to make some suggestions to better serve the public, our employees, customers, and staff going into our next fiscal year, which we are currently in, is my hope with the cooperation of the community, administration, staff, and of course, the town council, that we make Marion a better place to live, work, study, and play. If a department is not mentioned in this report, that means I find no reason to look further into that department, and it's doing any well. Any deficiency or questions on other departments is not a reflection of department head, staff, or employees. This report is to suggest to council that I may suggest study or implementation of procedural alteration or change. I'd like to begin with saying the town council of Marion, Virginia, is ultimately responsible for the entire operation of the municipality of Marion, Virginia. It is my town, it is my opinion that the town council needs more information of operations and departments and other activities that they should be aware of. It is the sole responsibility of the town manager of Marion, Virginia, to inform council of all actions and possible consequences in all departments. I want council to ask all departments to report ideas, suggestions, and possible areas of concern to the town manager and to council. First, I would like to address our water billing system. I encourage the council to take a deep dive into problems with our water billing system. Many customers have complained about their water bills. I encourage a study of this department concentrating on service to water customers in the outlying areas that may be subject to dual billing, hybrid billing, or customers that have been allowed to continue access without bringing accounts up to date. I would like a inventory of refunds that have been issued, reasons for these refunds, also credits to account, and I would like council to be knowledgeable of these refunds and fees, also leak detection efforts. I suggest that if outside auditing is suggested by council, that we contact the proper authorities for that audit, and I reject the idea that Radio Read will solve all the problems suggested in our billing department. I would like to concentrate on the previous two years and six months in our study of credits and refunds in our water billing department. Number two, I would like to take a little bit better look at credit card spending and departmental requests for travel, education, and other items that may not be included within departmental budgets. I am unsure of some of those requests and some of those payments, but I know that many taxpayer dollars go into reimbursement mileage, stipends, education, and I would like to have a little clearer picture as to the spending of those departments in those critical areas. Third, I have looked at our website in depth, and several people have looked at that website as well. I see problems and errors in communication. I believe that the website could use some enhancement. I would like to see a website that is a little bit easier to navigate, and in asking that we put our tentative budget onto the website, I was told by numerous people that it was very difficult to find and that it could have been easily, more easily found in our website, and that will aid in transparency. And I would hope that we could meet the IT committee in regards to the website and some of the communications problems that we're having. And since we're on that committee, Hunter, if you, being the chair of that committee, would like to schedule that, I'm available any point in time and can work within your schedule there.
Yes, sir.
We'll keep going as to any additional reports that I have. I do feel under the IT area that council may not be comfortable with their iPads. I've had several people that have had to turn them in for maintenance, connectivity issues and things like that, and I'd like to get with our IT department and talk with both Todd and Chris on that and see if there are communication errors that are keeping us from communicating well with the iPads. I myself have not had a problem, but I know that a few council members have had problems with their iPads. I hate that a couple of our council members are absent today because a great extent of my discussion has to do with the culture of our council and the activities, and as I said on the onset of this, council is ultimately responsible for everything that goes on in the town of Marion. And if there are failures that occur, it is our obligation and our responsibility to correct those failures and to offer suggestions and to be open to the administration, to staff, to employees, to anyone that wants to make comments and suggestions, and I respectfully ask that council make themselves available to these people in some way, shape, or fashion. That being said, there is one piece of, that, to the puzzle that we have not concluded, and that is the fact that we did, as a council, motion and approve unanimously our cellphones being attached to our names on the website. We have found a workaround for that that has been helpful in that matter, but that piece of, of agreement that we have made and made into a motion that we have passed has not been accomplished yet, and I would, I would ask council's intentions on whether they want to continue with that effort. What exactly is not being completed? We, on March 17th of 2025, voted as a council to put our cellphone numbers attached to our profiles for the public on our website. Not sure whether that meeting, I didn't, I didn't think to bring the minutes of that meeting, but that was something that we decided as council. We did find a workaround for that, that we can be contacted, but that still stands as an outstanding piece of business.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Todd, did we not get our numbers added to the directory on the town phone line?
So, our Comcast phone line is that when people dial to our direct number here, it gets the greeting, and it can set the greeting. When it comes down to council, I think we've got it set up now where you hit a certain number, whatever that number is, I don't know what it is off the top of my head, then it goes to reach Mayor Avery Cornett, press one, Ms. Hayes, press two, so forth and so on. And this is probably my fault, I thought that was the solution to that, but I'd be more than happy if council directs me to, to put the individual numbers on the council papers.
I personally think that's adequate enough.
I mean, I, it was during my hiatus. I think that would suffice, yeah, with already there, personally.
And like I said when we talked about this, if somebody wants to get ahold of me or any of us, I think they, they do that. They find a way to do it. If, I mean, I don't care if my number's out there or not, but people get in touch with me without any trouble.
It's the folks that don't get in touch with you that you don't know about.
Well, when they press, press for Dr. Gates, press five or whatever, then there's a message on there, right? I mean, I've heard it, you and I went through it one day.
Yeah, I think I went through each council member, I said, press a certain number for I said, press a certain number for, you know, Vice Mayor Gates, or Councilman Spencer, so forth and so on, and like I say, this might be my mistake, I, I thought that sufficed. I didn't know if, if the consensus was to add personal cellphone numbers or whatnot to the, to the website.
Do you not think that suffices?
Well, the motion was to add our numbers to our profiles, and it was unanimously voted on, and that's an outstanding piece of business from 2025.
Okay.
One of the things that hasn't been accomplished.
Okay, is there any way, and this will show my stupidity, that when you press for any of us, that that can go to our cellphone number and ring?
Yes, I've got to go to whatever number you all gave.
So they have it, it's one of our cell phone. If they press five, and on five, it's going to go to my cellphone.
Yeah.
It's going to ring my cellphone.
Yes, that, that is correct.
So, so I don't see the point of having a phone number out there, just, I mean, they're going to have to call the town regardless, and when they call the town, they're going to find out how to get a hold of anybody, Tony, Cindy, Samantha, anybody, Ken, Todd, they find out the same way, they find out all these other people.
I guess as it goes to the, to our phones, that, and I, I've gotten a couple of calls from people that I didn't know that somehow had my cellphone number, and I guess that's how they had it, and I, I don't mind.
But if, if you do get a call through that directory, it will show the town's landline number ringing on your phone. So if it wasn't the town's number...
Maybe it did, maybe it did, I just didn't pay attention, I guess.
So being that this is an outstanding piece of business, I mean, that was voted on then, there's, is there, there's really no way to retract that, is there?
Oh, of course, yes.
So we would either need to make a motion to amend that process or do what we had voted to do?
Well, you need to make no motion if you are instructing the IT professionals to complete the task that we tasked them with. If you wish to amend that action, then you would need to make a motion, and it would need to be voted on by council.
I'll make a motion, we leave it the way it is, Todd has it set up, because it will go directly to each of our cell phones. So I make a motion that we leave it the way it is at this time.
So.
I, I believe that you would need to make a motion to retract the previous...
I'll be happy to make a motion to retract the previous motion, because in our, in my eyes, we did what was done. Todd has made it available, every council member is available by calling the town, they have a way of getting a hold of us just as much as they have a way of getting hold of Cindy or Billy or Tony, or Todd or Ken.
You know, if I, I'm more prone to answer it if I see the town of Marion on it as, because sometimes I don't answer all the calls if I don't know who they are, you know, and maybe I should not do that anymore, but, but as long as it says the town of Marion, I'll be right off the call.
I'll second your motion.
Thank you.
So you, you want to rescind your first motion to leave it as it is?
I guess, that's what I need to do.
We'd have to use it as an amendment.
No, we'd second you, it's...
Well, you can...
Retract or amend.
So she made a motion that she's asking that motion be rescinded, I think you seconded it.
Yeah, I did.
And then she made a subsequent motion tying the number...
With the town to each of your individual cell phones was sufficient, and that was seconded by Dr. Gates?
Yes.
So you, two separate motions?
I rescinded my first one.
Rescinded first, okay. So we'll vote on...
So we have a motion and a second to retract the previous motion to place our cellphone numbers along with our profiles. Is that adequate description of the motion?
Yes, to rescind.
Yeah.
Any discussion on this?
Todd, was the main motive behind this was thinking of like future instance, like if one of us decides to get out of it, or if we don't want to run again, that you don't necessarily have that published out, but while you are serving a term that anybody can get a hold of us at any time using that directory?
From the discussions that I had internally, I think that was the main concern, that if you didn't get reelected, or you chose to step aside, or whatever, your number would be public, but they could still reach you while you're a city council.
Okay.
But there are also some concern about sort of security and increased reaching.
I, I don't remember all the conversations, but, but like I say, council, that I could, I might have misunderstood, I thought we took care of it with that, and, and like I say, I didn't, I don't mind to add individual numbers on there, but I do think that, I do recall that was a concern, that if you did want to realign, rerun for election, or if you did get reelected, then people, the community wouldn't have your private call.
I said, I don't remember exactly, but I think Chris was concerned that people could, you know, be your personal business.
Well, now that we've, now that we've got the Office 365, and a lot of email and stuff like that on your phone, I think that may have been mentioned, but I'm not, I, I don't want them to recall.
I think Chris King's concern was that the public could start texting your cellphone, and then if you receive a message, that way you could potentially get a FOIA request, you, you've got to let it, the FOIA officer, who currently is me, know, know that ASAP, so...
Too many avenues.
Too, too many avenues. There, there is a, a site already set up for people to make requests.
Okay.
I think this will suffice for our needs and the public's needs.
And you say that there are security concerns as well as, does it show up on the caller ID as the town of Marion, or doesn't it show up as the caller itself?
So when they push that, when they push whatever number coincides with whichever council member they want, their caller ID should come up on your phone. Now, if you do not answer it and you call them back, then your number that's programmed into that system, whatever number you called them back from, they will have that number at that point. As long as you answer the call, if it, it does sound like they called the town of Marion, correct? But if you missed the call, they leave a message, you call them back, then they will have your personal phone.
Okay.
It's a little bit weird how it works, every time, I've got my work file forwarded to my cellphone all the time, because I don't know if I'm out in the field, if I'm somewhere else in class, on train, but I get every call that comes because I got it forwarded to my cellphone.
So, a lot of good information to have there when you're in contact with your constituency, and returning a call might be something if you don't want the public to have your number, that, that's something that you need to think about, and I think there's a workaround for that, too.
Star sixty-seven.
Star sixty-seven, that's right. So that, that can happen as well. So we have motion and second, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor of rescinding the previous motion? All opposed?
Did you say raise your hand? Oh, I, did, did we already raise our hands? When you said all in favor?
Do we want to revote?
All in favor.
Yeah, revote.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
All right. Let's, let's, let's try one more time.
Sorry.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All in opposition? And you can leave my number on there, I'm fine with that. Okay, the fifth piece, piece of housekeeping that I would like to address is that earlier in the year, we authorized raises to our employees and across the board increases, and I think that that was a magnificent thing for us to do for our employees at the time. It is my knowledge that evaluations and departmental evaluations of employees are ongoing, is that correct? Okay, and I believe that the Personnel Department does need to do staff reviews and evaluations, correct?
We do the town manager.
Yes.
That's the only one we've ever done.
That's the only one you've ever done?
Yeah.
Okay, and when is the Personnel Department going to do that? Is that in August?
Well, I'd like for it to be in July.
July, okay.
We'll get together before we leave tonight and decide on a time, get with Billy.
Well, it's a six-month evaluation, when did you take office?
Yeah, it's not been six months.
It has been six months.
Has it? Okay.
It's been six months.
The official?
Yeah.
Official, I mean, you did the interim, but has it been six months?
I think it started January.
Really?
Pretty, pretty much the middle of January, yeah.
January, February.
So, but I, I don't think there's a reason to get technical with that. I believe in previous, that council, the entire council wanted to do the evaluation. Is that the way you plan to proceed with it this time, or do you wish to proceed as committee?
Well, we just need to talk about it, see what we, is best to do, I mean, it's worked both ways. When I was on the Personnel Committee the first time, the committee did it, and then somewhere into Bill's tenure here, council decided that, you know, everybody wanted to be in it. So I guess that we look for council's guidance.
Okay.
It's always been about the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's all, yeah, until that one or two times.
Keep us informed.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
We'll let you know tonight before we leave.
Aren't you on that committee now?
Yes, I am, but the chair of the committee will need to, to make the...
Yeah, well, the three of us, they need to decide a time.
Okay.
In July.
Are those evaluations, since it's personnel, they're not open to the public, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I just want you to know, because we would have three council people doing that, and you'd have to publicize it.
That is true.
With three people, so...
Yeah, it's gonna be after us.
It may be that they gather some information, but it is supposed to come before the whole council.
It's like we did last time.
But if they're meeting, if the three of them are meeting without the rest of the council...
They would have to go into closed session.
And you'd have to do it in a closed session.
As is the case in most personnel meetings, anyway. You can't really discuss those items.
Okay.
And then the person you're meeting, and then fill it out, review it with the rest of the council, and then...
And then the council voted, yeah, that's exactly, yeah.
Cam, the last time I participated, council wrote up comments, and we voted on it.
But not the cases, correct? We're through.
Oh, yeah, we have to advertise it.
Okay, there are only a couple other things that I wanted to speak about, but actually, I'm going to save these for another day because I would, I would like Councilman Hayes and, Councilwoman Hayes and Councilman May to be here when we discuss these other items, because they more closely pertain to them than others, and Hunter, you'll just have to wait. You're, you're pretty much up to speed. The last thing that I want to speak about is our budget, and our budget has grown quite a bit in the last few years, and I think that mainly that has to do with some of the programs that we're instituting, and, and Vice Mary Gates, if I, if I'm wrong on this, wouldn't, wouldn't a lot of that be considered pass-through money really, since it's grant funding that's going into the SERP program, the Callan Drive Recreational Park, and that won't really remain in the budget after that's over?
Yeah, but you've still got that for anywhere from six to 10 years to finish the SERP program. You know, the, the Callan Drive Rec Park will be over in a finite time. We're working with Wellmont with that for additional funding, but those funding sources, anything to do with the infrastructure, water and sewer, that has a finite date to it.
Was that not, was that not estimated in 15 years?
It was, and then they went to 18.
But we're kind of ahead of where we thought we'd be, I think, or we're not?
We thought we'd beat the estimated time.
But, yeah, I mean, you're correct, it's just a little while over.
But, yeah, but, but it's not, it's not, it's not really grant money, you have to use the term loan.
Yeah, it's a loan.
Most of it's a loan, and the citizens are paying it back through the, the 10-year period of increase in water and sewer. I mean, you're, the people, the town, people in the town of Marion are paying that. It's going to pay off because, you know, if you're elderly, you're paying it now, if your grandkids or grandkids, because they're not going to have to pay it once it's finished. You know, it should be just patching minor leaks, you know, attempting to get rid of all the problems that we have in a finite period, doing it slowly versus borrowing tens of millions in one shot and having the company do it. So, you know, we made a decision as council to do it over a longer period, pay as you go, and yes, it's going to be over in, in a finite period of time.
Well, it's my suggestion, under the mayor's report, that we get a report on where we are, where the contracts stand, where we are on the SERP program, and have a report brought back to council so that we more closely understand the monies that are involved there, the agencies, the funding. I'd like to, a, a lot of us are familiar with that, but I think a refresher course on that might be...
Yeah, I don't think that's a problem at all from the water and from the finance, I mean, Jamie could put one together by the next meeting, you know, how much we've done, because it's, it has to be the records for the, for borrowing the money and the records to the, that we have to keep for the state to allow us to keep doing this have much more specific than some records, you know, because they're very tight on how we spend that money. So, yeah, that can be done.
I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to get a closer look at that if, if we could, just so we know where we are in time, we know the success that we're making, and we can also share that with the citizens when they, they make their inquiries as to where we are in that program and some of the reasons that the roads remain torn up, and we're doing a great job keeping them patched and making the inroads into water accountability. Do we have a water accountability report?
Every month. You know, every month. Dawn does it every month.
Yeah.
We sent it this month, but it's been skewed, and we know it's skewed, so we're, you know, the new meters will have a lot, and it's going to take a month or two for plates to bounce out. And reminder, that's, you know, that's just domestic sized meters, we're not, we're not in commercial, but, so, yeah, Dawn and Dawn Clay does it every month, but I don't think I'll send ones in July, I don't know exactly when he does them.
Yeah, we had it every month, and we talked about that.
And I will, as soon as I do that, I'll base that on the council.
Do you, do you know what the last one was?
It was like forty-three. Four, like forty-three.
That's, that's better than what has been, so...
Yeah.
Doesn't sound like...
Sometimes it was worse than that one.
Yeah, yeah, sometimes it was...
We had to estimate every installation, it just wasn't worth the paper drug on it, it just was too, too skewed, so...
So that concludes my mayor's report on the last six months, except for a couple of other places that when the full council convenes, I will continue, but it's nothing that needs to be done now. So thank you all for your time, patience, and I also want to say thank you for working so diligently these last six months, while, or most of it, anyway, for some, and I'm looking forward to this next six months to really... And I'm looking forward to this next six months to really make some impact in some of the areas that I have discussed so far. So, we will have some meetings, we'll have some committee meetings, and we'll get some numbers back on some of the things in the Water Department, and we'll be able to make more informed decisions as we go down the road. I was going to talk a little bit more, but I think everybody's had enough of me. So, we will, yes, sure.
Maybe Jacinda, could you give the three of us a copy of the evaluation form?
I will be careful.
Yeah, maybe give it to us tonight?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay, and.
And then did you honor an engagement?
Yeah.
That's the same form. That's the same form. She's wanting the evaluation form, Sam can get it.
Is it the same form? I thought the manager.
Is it the same form for me as it is? Okay.
Can you go over that to the three?
I don't, I'm sitting here, but yeah, I'll see what's on my laptop.
Yeah, we'll take care of that soon.
I'll go back upstairs with my computer before we leave.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, we proceed with the Attorney's report.
No report.
Staff reports. Cindy Stanley.
No report.
Chief Hamm. No, Chief Testerman. I'm sorry, I can't see this iPad tonight, I don't know why. Chief Testerman.
We had, we brought out several officers last night to help the traffic and just general security of the fireworks. Didn't have any incidents on our end, everything was moving. I've still receiving some applicants to five again, so we're looking forward to getting that processed.
Okay, thank you very much. And now, Chief Hamm.
You had me jumping up there early.
Sorry.
That's okay. So, it's been a busy, busy month at Marion Fire EMS. It's also been very hot, as you guys are always aware. As far as staff reports, we've had several members that have completed training in both fire and EMS disciplines since I was last here. We had a very informative and busy few days at the Pierce factory. As you recall, during my last, during the last meeting that I was here, I told you that we were going up to review the specs for the new fire engine. We spent about three and a half days going over 125 pages of specs from bumper to bumper, top to bottom. And that facility, the Pierce facility, is awe-inspiring, and they have a great, great process up there, and it was, it was something to see. I'm happy to report that I think as of this morning, we've got all but maybe one or two very minor details worked out, and we're expecting that fire truck to be in here December or January at the latest. Man, just to reiterate some of the other stuff you guys have already talked about, the fireworks show last night was stupendous. Battalion Chief Tally headed that up for us last night on our end, we didn't have any issues. There was a little delay, as you guys have talked about. We had some meetings prior to, and I'm happy to report that there's also already been some emails sent out to prepare for next year to maybe alleviate some of those time constraints. It was always when the ballgame was over and not when dark, when dark happened. And it took us a little while to get the actual baseball field cleared, but we were able to get the citizens and the residents cleared out of the fallout zone pretty easily. It was a great crowd, and it was, it was some good baseball, too. Unfortunately, we didn't, the Hunger Mothers didn't have the outcome that we wanted, but it was still some good ball. We're busy gearing up for the rest of our summer events with the downtown events and the arts and crafts and all that stuff coming up. We got National Night, a National Night out pairing with MPD coming up at the beginning of next month. And in closing, I'd just like to say that I've seen some great teamwork out of Marion PD and Marion Fire EMS and public safety as a whole here in our community. Since I last saw you, they've helped each other out on the streets a lot, and it's really good. It's good for me to see that coming from, and having experience in both disciplines. So, it's been good. And that's all I have for you, unless you have some questions for me.
I do have questions.
Yes, sir.
I noticed people on the roof of the high school.
Right, last night?
Yes.
So, we put together an incident action plan last night, and we had an engine team stationed at the launch site, and we had a Quint crew that was in front of the high school, and some of those folks were actually on the roof as fire watch. So, they, once the fireworks set concluded, they went out and checked every inch of the roof to make sure that there was no, you know, unexploded ordinance or any danger to any structure fires or the roof having any fire spots on it. And then they cleared the entire perimeter before that was released. So, that was part of that, that was part of us, our contingency up there.
Okay, that's smart.
Yeah, they did a really good job with it.
Thank you, Rosie.
Thank you much.
Yep, y'all have a great night.
Careful behind you.
Just making sure he's paying attention.
Ken Heeg.
Thank you, my friend.
With Economic Development and General Operations.
Big weekend, Fourth of July, appreciate you guys coming out. Big weekend coming up, not this weekend, but next weekend with Phantom and the Hunger Mother Festival, looks like it's gonna be a great time for us. Want to remind you and the citizens of the walking tour coming up Monday. Virginia Main Street through my southwest Virginia received a grant. It's one of two studies we're doing, just timing ended up working out that way for the downtown. And we'll have a group in here next week, Monday and Tuesday. We'll be doing, touring some properties, five or six properties downtown, vacant properties, they'll be doing pro formas on those, hopefully get those filled back up. The problem was we didn't have five or six properties empty, so we're scrambling around and giving them some ideas on some of the things we're doing downtown. And then also, the public's invited to a walking tour next Monday night from 6:00 to 7:30. We'll leave here at Town Hall, walk up and down Main Street, and it's an opportunity for people to do some visioning. You know, we'd like to see this, we'd like to see that. One of the things that I'll caution you toward, and I'll also mention that to the folks and friends of southwest Virginia, one of my, one of my bailiwickers is when people get up and they say, well, what business would you like to have in here? You know, we would all, in theory, love to have, you know, buckies set up in the middle of Main Street. The reality of it is, the constraints of the size of community and population, the types of businesses we can get and types of businesses, unfortunately, we just can't attract in a small town in southwest Virginia. So, what I do is tell people to keep their, absolutely dream as big as you want to, but be realistic about it. You know, as opposed to, in the past, it's happened when we do our pop-up class, as opposed to having a Cracker Barrel, we ended up with a downtown pioneer that serves country cooking. So, those are the things we're asking for people to do, is come and look at downtown, how can we make downtown more accessible, not only physically accessible, but also accessible for all populations to come down and shop and enjoy our downtown. And then we'll give you a report to council at the next council meeting. So, that's Monday night from 6:00 to 7:30. You're all invited to come and walk with us. I'm still kind of slow, so it'll be a nice slow walk. So, please come and join us. And then next weekend, Phantom on Friday night and the Hunger Mother Festival on Saturday, and we appreciate you coming out for that as well.
Thank you.
Good job, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Town Manager Report. No, Todd Long. I don't know. I'm having trouble with that iPad. I need a bigger screen. I'm so sorry.
So, I guess the most important thing I got to announce today is, this morning at 8:15, Flav became a new daddy again for the third time.
All right.
Mother and daughter's doing good, she weighed six pound four ounces, she was 18 and a half inches long, and I hope I don't destroy this, but I think her name is Tirzah, T-I-R-Z-A-H. So, that's exciting. So, he'll be, he'll be off for a little bit, helping mom and baby settle back in. Just a couple things I gotta remind you of. Back in a February meeting, before we had a full council here, I had given council a proposed draft of the tree ordinance. Mark has been in contact, Mark Archibald has been in contact with me two or three times, asking about that. And if I'm not mistaken, council decided to put that off until we got a full council again. But I'm just bringing that to your attention, that's probably something we need to set a public hearing for at some point, or did we have a public?
I think you need to go to the Planning Commission, don't you?
It's already been through the Planning Commission. Yeah, it's already, it's already been through the Planning Commission, it's already been submitted to you. And I'm thinking, I'm wanting to say we had a public hearing on it in February, we was gonna set the public hearing. I'll have to look back through the minutes and look at that. Maybe we've not had the public hearing on it yet. The next thing that I know we've had the public hearing on was the sanitation stuff that you all wanted me to rewrite. It's actually been on the website now since the last regular scheduled meeting, since a public hearing. I personally hasn't, haven't heard anything from any citizens. You know, is this minor changes? I think we changed Airtight to Watertight, just some small things, nothing over 50 pounds, 50 gallons, 45 gallons, whatever it was. Made all those changes, that's been on the website under public notices since we've done that. And, and just for your all's information, and, you know, I know the Mayor said that people's having trouble finding stuff. Anytime we put stuff out there for public information, it's under public information button. I mean, it might be at the bottom, but it's under that public notice, but it may not be down at the bottom, but that's, that's where the budget was, Avery, just so you can tell people.
I was able to find it.
Okay.
Just I had several other people tell me they couldn't.
And that's, yeah, I mean, I don't know how to help, I don't know how to help that. You know, we put it under where we think it'd be the easiest to find, and that's most of the time, public notice, public information, and they should be able to click on it, but, yeah, I mean, that, you know, I just, we just put it the best place we think that it should go. But, and that's actually all I've had. I've been off last week, my wife's at home, she's recovering pretty well, and hopefully she'll be back at it in a couple weeks, and hopefully I'll be back here and get a little rest. That's all I have, unless y'all got some questions.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank Todd.
Glad you're doing it.
So, Todd?
Yes, sir.
You did not have anyone call you up and say, you need to change this, or this dot needs to be, this I needs to be dotted, or this T needs to be crossed?
Let me say this, there's one citizen that has responded two different times on some issues. You know, several years back, and, you know, I've talked to Tony and Billy both about this, several years back, we, I had made a proposal that we just buy everybody one of the 96-gallon Toter cans. It was gonna be $100,000 or something like that, but I think the way we were looking at that was, we're gonna buy everybody one. If you produce more trash at your household than a 96-gallon can can contain, you would be responsible for buying an identical can because we gotta buy the equipment to raise it. This particular citizen has sent video, the first video that she had sent, it showed her lid was still hanging on one hinge. Our staff member grabbed the trash bag out of the can, throwed it, hit the side of the truck and fell down, didn't break. They picked it up, he took the trash cans back to her porch. This time, she didn't provide a video of it, but she provided a static picture, which it looked like a different can than what was there last time, and it had the end zip-tied on it, but we pulled the footage from our truck and reviewed it ourselves. I think she actually made a FOI request of it today, or yesterday, or sometime. This particular time, they didn't move her cans, they just took the bag out of, out of the cans and didn't dump the cans themselves. They just took the bags out of the cans and got their trash that way. I think that, I think they had dropped a piece of paper down on one of the, down on her street, I think she got a picture of that. You know, we do the best we can do. I, that's all I probably need to say.
That's all we can do.
That's right, that's enough.
I'd like to make a motion that the ordinance is corrected and is posted on the website. Since we've had the public hearing, then we go ahead and pass that trash ordinance.
Second.
Need to move on it.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Carter, we need to get on with it.
So, with no discussion, we'll take it to a vote, all in favor. It is unanimous.
And that, that's all I have.
And if you will find out about the tree ordinance, whether we had, I don't think we had a public hearing on, I'm not sure.
I think we talked about it, Vice Mayor Gates. I don't think we ever had the public hearing yet. I did forward that proposed draft back to council today.
Yes.
So, if you all read over that as that was our proposal.
And we'll make some decisions on it next week on what to do.
If you see anything, you know.
Changes were made, the staff, along with me, did make changes to that tree ordinance.
And that's the new one with the changes?
That's a new one.
Okay.
That should be what you all have that I resent today from February.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Now, I'm almost sure it's the Town Manager's report.
Okay. All projects you see listed on the agenda are, you know, they're in motion. Some of them are turned over and others, but they are still in motion. I did meet with Greg Austin, Bitter Creek Contractors, but in the radio reads. And I knew, three weeks ago, that we were gonna be short on half-inch meters. So, I ordered 125 half-inch meters. If you remember back in the day when we first started this project, we had no information to tell us how many three-quarter hertz or half-inch we had. So, it was coming, but we kind of guessed that. So, we were about 110 off, which probably wasn't too bad to guess, but I've got 100, 100, 110 or, I've actually got 125, but we're gonna be around 100, 110. The ETA on getting them delivered is nub until sometime in September. So, it will be this file before we complete it. Contractor Bitter Creek, we talked today, he said he'd be glad to come back if we needed him to install the remainder when we got them. Tony and I have talked, and we think that no more than we got, that when we do get them, unless something remainder is happening when we get them, we can get those last 100. Or we still have the option, Colin.
Would he, would he stand by there, get whatever guarantee there is if we installed them? Tony?
Yeah, it's, it's on the meter itself. It's a bad.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, don't, don't worry about it.
I just didn't want any problem with that, that, I didn't put this in, so.
Yeah, that shouldn't be.
Okay.
So, and that's basically where we stand on it.
And we're getting feed on it right now? We're getting feed?
Oh, we have been.
And feedback?
And feedback, yeah. But once they go in, they're activating, you know, one at a time. As they put it.
Yeah.
But yes, you are correct. People, and I try to explain it, you know, they've had this old meter that loses accuracy over time. It's hard to tell how many years it's been there, and they've been used to paying that little water rate because their old meter's not accurate. We come in and put in a new meter, and, you know, their usage shoots way up because it's, it's finally, a new meter is more accurate, it's collecting everything that goes through that meter, and it's a hard, hard pill for citizens to swallow, so.
Is the staff here real good about trying to explain that also, like that it's collecting the money?
I get a lot of, a lot of.
I mean, I would want that explained to them.
Yeah, but, you know, some of them still don't really know what's supposed to be.
The mechanics of the meter, as it gets older, it doesn't spin correctly?
Yeah.
So, it spins slower probably?
It always, and I told a gentleman today that, you know, he was kind of wanting to dispute the new meter, and I said, well, if it's, if it's written in favor of the town, it's the first time in 40 years that I've been told that, you know, a meter is written in favor of the town. A less accurate meter always goes in favor to the customer.
Yeah.
So, and I, you know, that's what, that's what they're seeing, and they just don't, a lot of people don't want to accept it, but, I mean, that's one of the reasons we hit it for accountability.
Will that increase our ability for leak detection and?
It will, I'm all for it.
Will we be able to respond to that?
We do every day. The billing system has the capability of giving a notification for unusual usage. If the meter's been tampered with, we've had, we've already had a couple issues with that, but, but, yeah.
So, these, these new meters and this. So these, these new, uh, meters and this, uh, that comes with new billing software? Is that correct? I mean, our billing software is gonna be updated?
We still use the same billing software we have in place, it's a new process that we've used.
Oh, okay, well.
And I, and I'll be very ready to use, you know, number sale or electronic.
There's just, so the, so still the same meter billing software? The process of getting the readings into that software is what's changing?
Okay.
What we gonna do about the ones who purposely tamper with it?
We charge them criminally.
Criminal? Should be, 'cause it'll happen.
We already had one incident.
If it hadn't already, so, let's be rather, rather harsh on that, 'cause those meters are expensive and gotta be fair to everybody.
We already had one incident where Rob Longmore ran over a lid, and I can only assume that it, it wasn't latched down, but it flipped the lid up and gotten under Longmore's lip.
Hmm. He didn't see the lid up?
I think when he rolled over, he must've flopped it up. But yeah, I mean, uh, but tampering, I don't know, I mean, we had.
So does your water crew lock the lid down?
That was, that was the meter it sold, was right?
Yeah, probably.
So y'all took care of that?
Yeah, we had, we had to redo, put a new, uh, cellular device on, chop it up.
Good. All right.
But that's, that's basically, uh, I got his, you know, bottom line, his contractors should, should've left today, finished up their part for now, until we get some meters. When we can call them back and, or, you know, we can, we can kind of knock them out ourselves, depending on what public works it could have. And once you got questions, that's.
I believe we need to go into closed session?
Yes, sir, we do.
All right. Uh, Councilwoman Jennings, would you take us into closed session?
Yes, I make a motion we go into closed session to discuss two possible issues. Uh, the first, real estate allowed under state code 2.23711A3, and the second one legal is allowed under state code 2.23711A7.
I'll second that.
We have motion and second to go into closed session. All in favor of going into closed session?
Yes.
We will go into closed session.
Take five minutes.
Yes, yes, we'll take five minutes.
Are you ready?
Marion Town Council, July 7, 2025 is now back in session.
I make a motion that we adopt a resolution of assurances for new development between Marathon Realty Corporation and the Town of Marion.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? None being heard. We'll vote? All in favor? It's unanimous?
We need to make another motion.
Project Harvest Performance Agreement as presented and authorized signatures.
I'll make a motion that we approve the...
Project Harvest...
Project Harvest...
Performance Agreement.
Performance Agreement.
As presented.
As presented to the council. And then we follow up with signatures.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
Cleaning up some of the town properties. We're gonna wait for both of those issues for some more information.
Yeah, 21st meeting.
Would you please deliver this one as well?
Indeed.
Anything else to come before council before we adjourn?
Thank the staff members in here that have done such a good job tonight.
I'd just like to make one more motion to know that in the issue regarding the camping issue at Riverbend Park on private property, that the process of attempting to...
Enforce the ordinance.
...enforce the ordinances is in process.
Second.
Now, could you repeat that motion force?
I can't.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
She can read it.
All in favor?
No, she'll read it again if you'd like to hear it again, yeah.
Camping issue at Riverbend Park on private property, the motion, motion is going to start to enforce the ordinances.
Motion is clear now. And we have a motion in a second. All in favor? And it is unanimous. Anything else to come before council?
Not at all.
Make a motion adjourned.
Motion in second, all in favor?